The uh uh rec prices have remained at their as high as they can go, which is forty dollars a rec for a mass class one rec. Uh Maine class two is kind of the other class of resources we look at, mostly older hydro and uh smaller hydro. About nine percent of the New England region is served by existing hydro, not including uh hydro Quebec resources. So there's a decent amount of uh hydro in uh in New England and you know we and uh RMLD and a group of the other uh MLPs have purchased a lot of that already. That's typically the lowest cost decent sized rec in New England. And uh that rec has been uh down around two dollars and it could go as high as ten. Uh but we've seen like these storms come in like today, for instance, we see like we're not seeing like steady rain, both climate change, we're seeing uh big storms come in, drop a lot of water and then kind of go away for a while. And uh that's that's not great for hydro because when that happens, a lot of that gets spilled over the dam. It can't store that. Uh but that that's the kind of things we're seeing in in the hydro market that increases volatility in hydro prices. And then this is just kind of the transactions that E and E has assisted the MLPs with getting done since twenty twenty. We've done some non-carbon, we did some non-carbon transactions prior to that. But really since twenty twenty and since uh Massachusetts passed the requirement the MLPs to uh to work towards a net zero, uh we've ramped up uh our purchases and our negotiations to get more and we've done a little over two million megawatt hours per year of uh non-carbon energy among all the twenty four MLPs we work with. That's a pretty significant amount of non-carbon energy and uh probably the MLPs are the biggest players in that market and getting that market moving uh in the right direction. And so, yeah, we've done a good group, a good mix of all the different non-carbon uh resources, including a good mix of existing and and new. It's a little uh weighted towards existing because a decent part of that purchase is nuclear energy, uh which we do need. We want to be non-carbon going forward. We only have two nuclear plants uh left in New England. And I think they they're gonna play a big role in uh our non-carbon picture going forward uh because they provide a base base load, non-carbon energy, where the rest of this is all intermittent energy. So I kind of did, it's kind of, I don't want to quite play like this with the low hanging fruit, but these were, looking back, it was good we did these deals because we got these deals at extremely competitive prices. We were coming out of COVID and uh and the economy was down, prices for everything, well, not everything, but a lot of things were down. So we locked up a lot of this energy, which sets a great foundation for doing more of these transactions at maybe a little bit higher price, but it still works into the portfolio and it still keeps MLPs non-carbon energy prices extremely competitive uh compared to others in the marketplace.
Question, sorry, I'm here in the waiting room.
Okay.
Just a question on um for the, this is specifically non-carbon.
Yes.
So how would that compare to the total portfolio? What portion of the portfolio?
Uh it depends on like on the MLP and Greg, what you know, what RMLD.
Yeah, I know ours, but yeah.
Yeah, generally speaking, most of the uh MLPs that we work with are already at the fifty percent uh of their total portfolio being non-carbon. Pretty much all of them are at or near that number. So they're already in compliance with the twenty thirty uh requirements of the of the mass uh was kind of get the name. Yes, yeah, thank you, thanks. Uh so it's almost fifty percent.
Okay.
So we're we're most of them are at.
A question.
Yes.
Looking the forward pricing volatility, actually, it's a backward looking, no, I guess it's a forward looking chart.
Yeah.
Four seven. Um noticing the secondary peak is happening in July and not quite um coming about to the same level so that we're just seeing more air conditioning, more demand for natural gas for air conditioning.
We are starting to see electrification. That's a great question. We are seeing electrification kick in. So we are seeing uh more uh there's an AC component to that anyway. But we start to see more consistent electric usage kind of across the entire year.
And I just want to comment.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so real quick to the re- August, um while the load is higher in August, um the gas, the natural gas prices, which is roughly half of the generation in New England, it is it is not being diverted to heating. So there's a of gas prices, natural gas prices that feed half the market are low in the summertime. So you see that little that that bump up is due to load, but the underlying gas prices is significantly lower than it is in the winter months.
Yeah, yeah, very, very good. Good point, Greg. Uh yeah, there is like the gas pipeline network is designed to serve the coldest of cold days and the coldest of cold years. Uh so it's a lot of quote unquote excess capacity. And so in the summertime, gas price, gas transportation price, we call it basis, the difference between where the gas is produced, where the gas is used, the basis price, so that at yeah, a full rate on an interstate pipeline can be a dollar fifty per MMBTU. The basis in the wintertime, what the value of that is can be as high as twenty five dollars per MMBTU. Or in the summertime, it can be, you know, ten cents, literally ten cents. You see you paying ten cents more for gas in New England as you are, which is produced uh primarily on the Gulf Coast region.
In the non-heating.
In the non-heating months. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, one one question here. Bob, this is Vivek. Online, uh so question, you talked about three gas pipelines coming into New England. Uh I guess Columbia is one of them, right?
What are the, what are the three guys?
Yeah, so it's Tennessee Gas Pipeline, which kind of serves, comes in from the west, kind of serves up into northeastern Massachusetts. Uh so it kind of serves this region. Algonquin Gas Transmission comes in from southern New England, goes through Connecticut and uh comes up really kind of in the south of Boston. It does come up to like the Waltham area. And then uh Maritimes and Northeast Pipeline comes down from uh uh the Canadian uh Maritime Provinces. They thought at one point there was going to be a lot of gas offshore Nova Scotia and that did not materialize. So they built this pipeline that actually uh is empty a lot of the year, but there there is a big LNG storage facility in New Brunswick. So uh but that they they fill and empty that based only on economics. If they see prices high, they'll bring in some LNG. If they don't see that, they they'll they won't put any LNG in those tanks. So that's the other big LNG, split LNG for New England versus Everett Terminal.
So so the pipeline that comes to RMLD territory, would that be the Tennessee Pipeline?
Uh yes, it is. Yeah.
And and Maritimes.
Oh, I actually, yeah, right. Maritimes does touch the outskirts of uh North Reading, goes through uh then goes down through Middleton, it comes uh down through Maine, New Hampshire, then basically follows kind of like Route one fourteen to Fort Beverly. And it goes into Boston Harbor, goes around Boston Harbor and delivers into Algonquin and uh Wayman. I used to work.
So so those are the two pipelines that come, but if we are dealing with Columbia, so Columbia would be?
Columbia serves uh primarily the the mid-Atlantic region. Columbia would deliver into Algonquin and Tennessee.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It is actually Aricoy Pipeline, which is, not to leave them out, but they're in kind of they come from my eastern New York around Albany and they go into uh western Pennsylvania, but that line is primarily serving Long Island. It kind of backbeats New York City.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Uh that's it. So uh you know, we think continued volatility is kind of the word at the word of the market and uh keeping a balanced portfolio is kind of what what we uh suggest when we work with the MLPs to to implement. That's it.
Question. Um what's the appetite of E and E to, I guess, invest in new types?
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Yeah, so uh because of all the intermittent uh non-carbon energy is typically intermittent energy. So the more intermittent energy we get uh and actually the increased use of electricity uh is going to increase the need for uh more electric transmission. So and I'm not our electric transmission expert, but the the outlook is for these electric transmission costs to keep on going up rather substantially and uh and you know, I I think that that's the, and E and E is started an electric transmission company in order to look at opportunities where maybe uh a new transmission line going through an MLP service territory can can uh help the si- help the transmission system. And if you own transmission like RMLD does, we look at that as a good hedge. Like is those, if those prices increase, if you own some of it, you can share those increased prices and that'll work to keep your overall electric rates down, right? Because now you own a piece of that. So we look at that as a hedge and that's why E and E Transmission was formed to try and get a piece of that market in an in an opportunistic manner, really. Yeah, and then maybe some place, there's sometimes where we could work with the IOUs uh in a in a on a particular project uh to get to get something done. That's kind of like the path of least resistance. So that's how we look at that.
So so on that, Bob, will you be able, who who will be able to, I know FERC is coming up with the new transmission rules, right? Uh and I think there's like a six month period for the ISO New England to figure that out. But will you guys come back and advise us on that?
Yeah, uh there's a lot of changes going on and now by the FERC just issued a one thousand page uh order on the electric transmission market going forward. So we're kind of digesting that now, but you know, it looks like that that's going to allow for greater sharing of transmission costs within a region. So it'll allow for more non-carb- carbon resource to come online and spread those costs like throughout the region and not just on the one state that might have greater uh non-carbon goals than another. So, you know, sounds like a good plan. We'll have to, the devil's in the details. We'll have to see what that actually means.
Vivek, this is Greg. Um so as we talked about a couple of meetings back, we're one of nine of the MLPs that are part of this E and E Transmission piece. Um and Dave Kavanaugh, as Bob mentioned, is one of the E and E SVPs that's that's championing the project. Um there will probably be an opportunity for him either in the July meeting or the September meeting to uh provide an update to us. There's a lot of things that are just starting to happen right now in the transmission space, as as Bob alluded to. So we'll we'll take an action item either in July or maybe September will be a logical time to have an update.
Yeah, no, 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 thanks, because I think there's a lot of discussion in that about integrating storage resources and others and yeah, and people paying for use. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh one other thing I forgot to mention, just want to mention is uh we recently did a transaction and RMLD participated in purchasing additional uh energy from Hydro Quebec. That was a five-year transaction. Uh so I think it's, I think it started off, starts.
Starts again.
Yeah, January, it's coming January.
Yeah.
And then it ends in twenty thirty. Uh we tried to get Hydro Quebec to go longer, get term on that deal. But uh Hydro Quebec is unsure of their hydro generation capability moving forward. So that was kind of like if we didn't do anything in New England, we could always look north because there's this huge hydro system, hydro generation system in Quebec. Uh but they're unsure how much they're gonna have to export uh going forward. So that's another reason for the volatility.
Is that due to climate change? Is that due to climate change? Well, uh there might be multiple drivers to that. They will have their own energy increased demand as they have.
Canadian demand, Canadian demand.
Yeah, it may just be a matter of how much they had for export because they may.
It it could just be a philosophy view, which is the commissioner saying it, where like they want to keep more of the their energy in Quebec and build up industry that's heavily electric uh in Quebec. And that that's just, that could be, but there's also uh there's also uh it's becoming more difficult to get new projects, new hydro projects done uh in in Quebec for a number of reasons.
Look, dam projects are not looked favorably anymore. And you can look at Newbury Port, um Newbury Port that or Ipswich. One of the towns just voted in a non-binding resolution to take their town dam down. So damming rivers, damming streams, generating the reservoir that generates the power is not.
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good, I mean, uh you know, we all live, that's the Ipswich River, Ipswich River. I live in North Reading, right by the Ipswich. So you know, that's a good thing for the Ipswich River.
Well, yeah.
That dam though, that dam was never a hydro, uh it was a hydroelectric dam, it was a really small, I think it was for uh really just for, it was to generate water.
Local production, yeah.
Yeah, the old dam.
Manufacturing.
You know, a hydro dam tends to be very, very tall. And if you could even see, we have some very big dams, surprisingly big dams in western Massachusetts and in Maine. Uh but for and and they have, you know, if they don't have fish ladders, they soon will have fish ladders. So they're kind of doing the right thing to allow the fish to swim upstream and bring life back to the rivers and the hydro, you know, supporting those hydro producers is a good thing because it gives them money to do that kind of thing, to do the right thing uh within the hydro system. The the Ipswich Dam is a small dam.
I know.
It's just simply just blocking the fish from getting upstream.
That's I was more commenting.
Yeah.
And how people look at dams, yeah.
No, I'm like, I'm so unfair. I'm so happy that they actually voted in favor taking that dam down, the particular one. That's that, that's, oh, sorry.
We're just staying on that um same theme. What happened with the power lines that were coming down and then Maine stopped that? Where is that project now?
So that uh that project is going forward. Uh that 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 project was bringing and they're in Hydro Quebec does, they actually renegotiated those power contracts. Uh and we're seeing more of that happening in the business. It's uh you know, I I'm an attorney, went to law school and like a contract's a contract they teach you, but that's really not the way things are going in the energy business because of supply chain issues and uh inflationary issues and ability to get things done. But you know, there was a lot of local opposition and it was really driven by local energy producers didn't want that energy to come into New England to compete with them. Uh they finally did get through the Maine Supreme Court and it is, it is moving forward, but that only brings power into central Maine. You still have to get the power from central Maine down here and there's going to be more upgrades needed uh for that to happen. So that like Massachusetts is buying power. And I tell this, my wife's from Maine. I said, and I tell all my, I told my mom, you should be in favor of that project because it's bringing power into Maine, which will lower the locational marginal pricing in Maine. And we will get some down here. It does benefit Massachusetts as well. Uh but it benefits Maine. It's it's a direct benefit to Maine. It is happening now. Okay.
Uh one other question. Um on when you're purchasing energy, what what do you feel like the market's gonna take against ISOs going forward? As 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 we progress, you know, we're MLPs, we're.
Yeah, when we when we purchase energy, like we purchase enough that we have kind of an ongoing purchasing stress and we know where prices are. But we we, when we look at purchasing energy, we do a forward price curve. So we look at financial, the financial markets. And then on top of that, we look at the fundamental markets, what's happening in the market, like offshore wind is delayed. So that would increase our forward curve price. And the forward curve price has gone. And that's not as volatile because we kind of try to take the volatility out of that pricing when we're negotiating a transaction. Uh so on average, that's been anywhere from like forty to sixty dollars per megawatt hour in the last five years. But it could, it could go as high as like, it went as high as ninety dollars a few years ago. So when we're measuring what we buy for, we're we're measuring that off of our forward curve. And a supplier has a forward curve as well. And a lot of the negotiation is getting convinced who's right and who's wrong on that forward curve analysis. But like we did some solar deals and you know, there were issues with solar with tariffs and that kind. They worked with supplier. Uh so they were able to get their panels uh imported. Uh so that there are issues like that too, that are beyond the forward curve, just kind of fundamental market delivery issues uh that we still have a working with. But we're seeing, you know, with the most recent prices we're seeing are in the, you know, high seventy, high seventy dollar per megawatt hour range uh going forward. But that's still good for for any like RMLD because you can put that, you you you're getting your hands on that power before someone else does and you're bringing it to your portfolio, which when you're doing weighted average cost, it's still very competitive compared to an IOU. And nothing against the IOU, the IOUs weren't allowed to do this. So we had a bit of an advantage to get this done.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Good, thank you. If you guys want to make the motion and then we'll hear about the uh the new EV rate? Uh you you have to do the cab motion first.
Which?
For suggested EV rate, or do we do a presentation first?
We'll do a presentation.
Thanks. Um let me introduce uh Megan. So Megan is the uh she joined us earlier this year. She is the Assistant Director of IRD. Um she's got, I won't go through her pedigree, but most recently I'm at the DPU. So she's got analytical bend. She understands our energy space uh intimately well. She and and Bill drive the IRD team. Um so she's uh she's she's already jumped into uh uh doing all sorts of stuff in the organization. So Megan, I will let you kind of walk through the uh, set the context in terms of what rate this is specific to and then explain how it structured.
Thank you, Greg. Uh good evening. Um I'm gonna, oh, I think we can go.
Here you go, kids, great.
Yes.
Perfect.
Uh so I'm gonna talk about a rate proposal about direct current fast charger. We call it DCFC, TOU demand charge rate. But before I introduce that rate proposal, I just want to provide some context of why we are doing this. Because uh since I joined here, um we are already in the process of doing a comprehensive cost of service study. And based on that, we're gonna do a rate design overhaul for next year. However, we have been getting uh inquiries from our customers about a EV rate, like specific DCFC uh rate. So in response to that, to we didn't want to wait, so you you know, we came up with this, um we call, I call it a pilot rate, just so that it's available. If any customer wants to choose to use it, they can, they can use it. Um we envision the kind of a potential customer who might use this rate or choose this rate, that you know, for example, a a store that you know, put puts in a uh public DCFC charger, a two-port charger. And then maybe they could choose this rate if they can convince their users to, I'll I'll explain how the rate work. Um and 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 that that might be one scenario. Another one, maybe just any kind of business, if they install DCFC chargers for their own employees or for their visitors, or generally if anyone can park there and use it as general public as well. So just to be clear, this is not for the E, this is not a rate for EV drivers. It's for what what we call a side host that 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 the DCFC chargers are on their premise. And then because we supply electricity to them, so we would provide this rate to them if they choose so.
And they would provide the equipment.
Yes, so they own the chargers.
The chargers are separately metered or no? This is?
It needs to be separately metered, but um I think the chargers, the the network charger, the smart chargers, they have interval data, so that that is an option. They don't have to install another meter.
Would would this potentially apply for any of the chargers installed around town?
Uh this would be, this would, so this is um a rate we would charge to an intermediary. You could then either decide to bill or not bill their customers. Um it would not be an RMLD own piece of equipment. It would be, it would be a third party or the grocery store and it could be Tesla. Uh they could, it could, so this is a, this is a model where somebody else owns the charger.
ChargePoint is the big.
ChargePoint could be enough. Now, just for clarification in terms of ChargePoint, um ChargePoint typically sells their chargers to somebody else, like we have several of them. Um and then they also provide the software that that manages all the transactions as well. Um in our territory, ChargePoint is primarily a service provider and equipment provider, as opposed to them owning the the hardware, but that's a good, a good observation too.
And the way the rate is set up is um without this rate, the customer, you know, the the kind of a typical customer, they can choose a commercial rate or industrial for their EV chargers. They can still have the same account, you know, tied to their building. They can still do that. This is just to provide them another option. So the way we design, as I said, we don't have a whole lot of cost or service, you know, background information for the rate design. So basically, we're just looking at the existing C rate and I rate in this table. And we basically not changing any other components of the rate. We're just either taking a component of the I rate or a component of the C rate for the all the other components. The only thing we're changing is their distribution demand rate. So we're having a higher on-peak demand charge and a lower off-peak demand charge.
Could you please explain I rate and C rate?
Uh the I rate is the industrial time of use rate, a C rate is the commercial rate. So on the table, those those in black, those are already in effect. Those are the current rates. So the only thing we're changing are the two in orange or red, you know, which screen are looking at? Does that, does that make sense? And then the, so in order to test whether this rate would make sense, if we go to the next slide.
Just just you're good um anticipating the question. So the, just distinguish the time horizon between the on-peak and off-peak rate.
Yes, yes, that's a good uh for the current industrial time of use rate, our on-peak has a very long period. It's between twelve and seven, I think.
Yep, twelve, seven.
Uh for the DCFC rate, the on-peak period is only from four PM to eight PM. That's that's currently where we see the peaks for the most part.
Near term.
So we want to narrow the 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 window of the peak so that people are not like shocked when they, you know.
And what is PPCT?
So PPCT is, it is a combined rate for capacity and transmission. So it's all bundled into one PPCT rate. But that's where the, that's where the high that's where the um significant components of the cost increases come from, capacity and transmission. You go.
And all right. So um this chart is comparing the bill impacts of the the three different rate choices. And this is based on a uh two-port DCFC charging station. That's about, it's less than two hundred kilowatt, like the maximum is less than that. And then the rate is calculated based on the highest monthly demand of that charging. We have a charge uh three charging stations here at M L R D, so we use that data um to kind of develop that that bill impact uh calculation. Uh you can see on the chart, if uh the side post, anyone, all all the drivers that come to the side post, use the DCFC chargers and only charge during off-peak hours, which is outside the four to eight PM. use the DCFC chargers and only charge during off-peak hours, which is outside the four to eight PM window, time window. That customer, that side host, that grocery store or that business, they will pay the lowest bill of all three rate choices. But however, if all the drivers come to the site and charge between four and eight, they will pay the highest, almost the highest. It's, it's almost the same as the, the commercial rate bill, bill impact.
So it's given the range.
Yeah, so if the drivers come in just randomly, I, I'm sure not all will come during those four hours, not all will come outside the four. So if it's in between, then the bill impact will be between those two numbers. Does that make sense? Yeah, so, so basically, the idea of a TOU is, you know, to encourage the user, the drivers to charge outside the peak window. Because for DCFC, the biggest impact is their power, the charging power. Well, you know, especially one, one port could be fifty kilowatt, that's like five houses' capacity. So that, you know, the, the idea of having this, you know, considerably lower rate for the off-peak period, is just really to encourage them to, to, to think about when they want to charge or use that charger.
Do you know if the, these people, these people who own these uh charging stations, if they are basically just charging a premium or whatever you're paying, whatever they're paying us?
Right, that's a very good question because um, that, that's why Greg.
Then, then, then it doesn't matter to them because they're just passing the fees on to the.
Well, that's the thing, they could be paying a high demand charge. When they can, you, you, you really cannot really charge a customer, like the customer comes to buy grocery and then they happen to charge during that time. I'm not sure if they, uh, it's, it's their decision. Would they, could just do really?
Charging fee be variable too? Or so it could be. So it, it.
That, that was my question, yeah.
If I may, so um, we are not setting the, in, in this particular model, or in this particular business model, we are providing energy and selling energy to a third party that is selling energy in our territory. And just to be clear, this is the only exception where somebody other than RMLD can sell power within the territory. And it was a provision that was made several years back, primarily to the IOUs without a lot of thought to the nature of our business, just of context. So this is a, this is a very, and it's a very unique scenario. We as RMLD do, are not in a position to define who, what rates.
I, I understand, but, but the meters have the ability to have a variable charging rate, correct?
Which is what, which is what, as Megan's explaining, enables us to do this two-block charge, you know, on-peak, off-peak configuration.
I mean, are, the commercial institution that has these chargers, they pay RMLD the, the rate on-demand or off, uh, on-peak or off-peak. But their charge to their customer could be variable as well, correct?
So like, we charge them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They could pass all that a hundred and twenty dollars to their customers. To like whoever come, come in to charge, they could. Or they only, you know, pass through like fifty percent. I, I, it's, it's their decision.
I mean, I, I, I've never used a charger, but you just pay by card when you use these, or how do you even do it?
Or an app, or an app. Yep, it's, it's a credit, it's a credit transact, well.
So if a customer comes in between four and eight, he's gonna pay more for that power, is the point.
If the.
He could, I mean, it depends, uh, he has, this, the owner has the ability to charge him more.
The owner's gonna pay us more, whatever's, but whatever the owner decides to charge.
He has the ability to charge more if he chooses to.
Yes.
Okay.
And typically, they'll tell you how much you're paying.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Super.
Couple, couple questions. Um, what is, how many chargers do you think this will apply to right away and how many in the future, or do we have any, any sense?
Go ahead.
Um, so the increase we got, uh, one is, yeah, one is from Tesla. Um, but ever since we developed this rate, I think they dismantled their supercharger.
Oh, right.
Business.
They took the team away and then they're, and then two weeks later. It's gone. He's gonna announce he's gonna spend a half a billion, well, you know, okay, they're restructuring, so at the end of the day, it's, we're talking a handful, but it might have been twenty chargers um at a, at a retail establishment in, in Wilmington. Was, was the reason why we had to do, had to put this in place, because they were saying, look, we wanna, we wanna do an installation in September, October.
Do, do we thi, i- is it somehow gonna be back retro, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? Reto, to all the existing ones? Is this gonna go and be applied?
The choice, so they could choose the next year or now, it, they could choose it, but they need to stay on the rate for one year.
Anybody who now has a charge point could switch to this next year.
Yeah, but it's a DC, it has to be a DC.
Okay, this is only DC fast charger.
Oh, it's the only, the very, very, okay, I'm sorry.
And the reason that's important is because those systems, like our system at the library, has a capacity of a hundred and seventy-five KW.
Right.
Whereas, whereas the level twos we have out here, um, are seventy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So here's another question. Are you gonna be able to collect data on when those are being, at what, what the actual usage and the actual times people charge are? And how those times?
If they own the chargers, uh, I'm not sure, because if we don't have meters, I don't, I don't know if we can, but.
But our configure, we are going to make sure that we know that, in order for us to charge properly, we are going to have a meter on there that will do at least fifteen minute data. How we do that is open for discussion, but we will have that data.
So that in the years from now, we can go back and see, when were these DC fast chargers being used? And how did those, when did they align with peak times?
Definitely the intent.
In particular, when did they align with the annual or monthly peaks, so that we got, we took a bath in, in a sense?
No, we did, yeah.
Because we will take a bath if, if somebody does a DCFC charge during the, the peak hour of the year.
Well, the intention, so the, the intention behind the rate design now is that, well, it's, it's higher, it during that.
It is, but it's, but the difference is eighteen cents versus ten cents.
Yes.
Where on the peak hour of the annual or the monthly, you could be facing ten, a hundred X for your wholesale power.
Yeah.
Or. Well, the commercial rate, I think it's designed to, uh, uh, it's a balance, it's an average, right? So you, you're getting that across, across the board. You know, it's, this is the first foray into, into TOU. And but I will say that, anecdotally, the only thing you see is DC fast chargers, period.
Well, I.
Uh, other than residential and smaller, but I, from night, that's the only thing that, that I've been seeing in, in any, any new commercial. It's all DC fast chargers.
You might not see it though.
In a residential, it's different. In a, in a residential place, that a, a multi-dwelling unit, no DCS. But, but anything that's commercial, set, set up to sell commercially, it's, it's pretty much DC fast charger.
Because you would see it though, because they're just, uh, the, the level twos are just, um, they're just, um, not getting my words tonight. They're only like a two hundred and forty volt, like dryer out.
Right, it's kind of like. Yep, and so that's when we're talking about KW load, there's seven, somewhere between seven, most of them between seven and eleven KW. Some of the newer level twos go up to fifty KW, but you're right, the real, both of you are talking that, the DC fast chargers are typically between a hundred and.
Right, they're huge, but the level two that we see over at the charge points are only doing, pulling seven or eight thousand watts. That's a two hundred and forty volt connection, just like a dryer or a stove.
Yep, yep, yeah, yeah. So not as big. You're going back to the key, you know, what Bob was talking about earlier, you know. Pressure that we want to be aware of is the trend, there's energy and, and certificate costs, but the, the key driver that we're trying to be aware of is, as you, as you, as you guys all know, is the peak associated with uh, capacity and transmission charges. And so this is, we have a, we had a customer that was aggressive. We figured let's, let's, let's get it in place, let's see who else comes up with it. We have, you know, there's one DC fast charger in our territory, which we happen to own, which is, which, which is the library, which interestingly enough, um, while it, while its utilization in terms of minutes per day is low, it has already um exceeded in terms of KW eight sold, above all the other ones collected, interesting. So I mean, it, it's a pipe, I mean, it throws, if you plug into it, man, you're, you can't quite see the electrons, but.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Big cable, man.
I guess all I'm getting at is that this seems like a great opportunity for peak management. And these prices, the, the price spread here does not look like a very big price spread to me. Uh, given the magnitude of what they draw and the need to manage the peak, they don't, it doesn't look that big to me. And it looks like a, a point source opportunity to do more, uh.
Uh, so I, I want to point out maybe two things. One is, uh, earlier you talked about the PPCT uh charge. We are actually still applying the, the kind of the on-peak, off-peak for fuel charge in the, in, in, in the DCFC rate. So there is still that differential that we're adopting from the industrial rate. And then in terms of the ratio between the eighteen and ten, um, I agree, but we just need more. We, that, like I said earlier, we need to do the cost of service study. If we want the ratio to be, for example, five to one, we need a solid basis to say that's five to one.
Okay, so it's gonna start somewhere in other words.
Yeah, okay, but, but I think Megan brings up a good point, and that, we probably should have made that read on it, but the fuel on-peak and off-peak, it is mirroring the, the industrial rate, the I rate. As you see there, those last two lines, it's three point six four versus nine, point oh, three, six, four versus point nine, nine, nine. So there's a three to one ratio there, but again, that's, that's roughly um thirty percent of the cost of, of the bill. And then the other place, the other portion of it is the demand chart, which is not a point, point. So it's not, you're right, it's not extreme, but it's, it's enough, yeah.
So this is the rate for, would be the rate for a year, as we're going into the pilot. And then would we, would we look at this rate as part of our annual?
Oh, yes, and we'll get data on what the actual and when it was used.
If, if customers do adopt this rate.
If they have. If they actually install the charger.
Yes, yeah, well, another example, I think it's the UPS, they would, they are thinking about, you know, electrifying their fleet. And they probably wouldn't want to use DCFC chargers.
For a portion.
Uh, for, for part of it, yeah.
And then what's on?
Can, can we change the name to punitive power?
Yes.
Can we change the punitive power, commercial charger?
I like the sound of that. Next question, please, yep.
Yeah, I, when I look at the rates, and I'm, I'm under the perceive, I look at the definition of the periods, they kind of confuse me a little bit. I understand the eight to twelve, eight, five, four to eight, but then we go from eight to four. So it, it, you know, it, I feel it's just a confusion there because I assume the four is the next day.
Yes.
But it's not clear to me.
Okay.
That that, that is what's saying in the rate.
Yeah, it's, it's.
You need to clear that language up.
Yep.
I think there needs to be some sort of clearing that language. It means somebody could come along and say, well, you know, hey, I was, you know, I was there between four and eight. You know, even though with them and ours, they're at midnight.
Yeah.
Been clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we ready to do motions and votes and all that?
Yeah. Uh, so I move that the Citizens Advisory Board recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to create the following MDPU rate effective for billings on or after June first, twenty twenty-four. It's the three fourteen DCFC EV charging rate. Second?
Second?
So, uh, in favor?
We got, um, Vivek was gonna abstain from these votes, which is the three of us.
Okay, so.
Okay. Um, so all in favor?
All in favor, aye. Roll call, roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Ken Walter, aye?
Tim Woods, aye?
That's Kelly.
Thank you. That needs to, uh, say, he abstains.
Vivek, okay.
Yeah, Vivek's saying it for the rest.
Yep.
How about Billy, want to read the motion?
Uh, I can raise the official.
Raise, raise the reader.
The official motion.
You jumped on the last one.
So I, I didn't know, I still had my job.
Personally attached that one, it's a minute. That'll probably be in my email by the time we get back in the other room.
Move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to create the following MDPU rate effective for billings on or after uh June first, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Looking forward to the data.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, all, ready for a vote?
Okay.
Five of them. Favor, thank you very much, and nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, NEPA conference, is that what we're up to?
Yes.
All right. Uh, who wants to read and uh, assuming that we're okay with, we're going to the NEPA conference?
Yep.
There's a motion here, but go ahead, yeah.
Can we combine them?
Uh, no, I think we have to.
Okay.
Well, I think the reason why we structured it a little bit differently is, we set the, the, the two boards, the Board of Commissioners, CAB, to be those who extend to all of, and then you can decide later on who will pay upon your travel schedules or whatever.
Ray, you're up.
Um, VOC suggested motion, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve Greg Fitts' travel to and attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association NEPPA Annual Conference, take place August twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the Omni Mountain Washington Resort in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any discussion, all in favor?
Yep.
Motion carries five to O.
You have a second on that? I did.
Yeah, Pam seconded, yep. Ray, you want to go for the next one?
Uh, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve for all commissioners that are interested in attending, travel to and attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association NEPPA Annual Conference, to take place August twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the Omni Mount Washington Resort in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Second.
Pam seconds, any discussion?
Yeah, just, I just, I think, you know, I've always found this, and I've been to many of these, it's a good uh time to kind of network with other people. It's an excellent time, I recommend that the commissioners go to it. I'm intend, I intend to uh, to, to tend. Maybe my last one, but that's a story. At this, and I think uh, we have to make, I think Erica, we have to make the uh full-time arrangements ourselves, is what we do. No, you make it.
Yeah, so what will happen is on, if you plan on going, you let me know, and then I'll fill out training and travel form. But yes, you make the hotel reservations yourself, and I would do it as early as possible because the room block fills up quickly.
Early June.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm trying to think what's the estimated cost for, for attending?
School. I think it's on the website, it's on, I believe it's on the NEPA website.
It's like something like two hundred bucks per person plus the cost of the hotel and travel.
Four hundred to fifty hundred dollars, yeah, roughly, yeah.
And so obviously, we cover that, and it'll be the same thing like the trip you did.
Did we have a second, Ray?
I did, yeah.
Yep, okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries five O, Gab?
Uh, Tim, you want to read the motion? Uh, move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approve for all members that are interested in attending, travel to and attending at the Northeast Public Power Association NEPPA Annual Conference to take place, August twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the Omni Mount Washington Resort in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Um, he's abstaining.
Yeah, Ken Walter, aye.
Tim Woods, aye.
That's Kelly. Okay, procure requests. Um, who would like to read the tree trimming?
I can give Ray a break. Um, do you, do you want to talk about this before I read it?
Typically, we read it.
Okay, fine.
And then all.
Uh, so IFP twenty twenty-four thirteen tree trimming services move that did twenty twenty-four thirteen tree trimming services for hourly rates be awarded to Northern Tree Service LLC pursuant to Masterella C thirty, section thirty-nine M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general, general manager. The contract is for a one-year term with the option for RMLD to renew the contract for a maximum of two one-year renewal, renewal terms.
Second.
Second.
Bob seconded it.
Greg? Wait, so, um, you guys remember, uh, earlier this year, we had a lot of discussions in terms of uh continuing to outsource versus bringing it in. Um, we all knew that, so part of the discussion at that point in time, especially existing contracts that were going to expire at the end of June. Um, so this is intended to do a replacement of that one, that would start um at the beginning of July. Uh, we sent a bid out, went out to fifteen customers, uh, fif- fifteen companies. Uh, we received two bids, one from the incumbent, Mayor Tree Service, and the other one from Northern Tree Service, Northern Tree Service. Um, they're both um large, um, well-known, reputable um tree trimming co- uh, companies that work throughout New England. Um, both uh, uh, Mayor and Northern Tree in particular do a lot of work with MLPs such as ourselves, so. Um, the one thing that we ended up doing on this particular bid, we, um, in the last bid, we were experimenting with um doing a span, uh, on a span base, as opposed to on an hourly base. Um, the conclusion we had, um, Um, the conclusion we had um is that the hourly base is probably um. A less expensive and exact the bid process, um well. Um, it looks like based on the bids that we received, that that looks like it's gonna be the case. Um. So anyways, in the table, um in order to make the bids comparable, we did it on a. Structure, so there was a consistency of how many hours would be bid. So while you see there, um the two numbers eighty four thousand seven hundred ninety eight versus ninety nine thousand five hundred forty. Uh, we expect the. The actual money that we spend to be a million, yeah, to be a million dollars a year, but that's basically what allows us to give a comparison. If we were to expand that out, the difference is a little bit over. Ten to almost fifteen percent difference, roughly.
Yeah, Erica, I'm sorry, the the screen has gone crazy again.
I'm sorry, Vivek, I'm working on it with I T.
Um, yeah, so he's working on that piece. So anyways, um all said and done. It's a, it's a. Voice activated. So anyways, um any? That was the screen background. Screen saver or whatever it was. Uh, so any questions on the tree trimming service? So we're gonna, uh and and as you, you know, as it's in the motion, um. The intention of that is, you know, we'll go a year, um.
And that, so. It it's gonna become a major expense over time.
So it's not insignificant already, but yeah, agreed.
Any other questions? So we're ready for a vote?
Yep.
Okay. We had a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries five oh.
Um, okay, um, move that I F P twenty twenty four fourteen for alignment tools be awarded to Stewart C Irby Company LLC. Doing business as Irby Utilities for fifty five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars pursuant to M G L C one sixty four. Section fifty sixty on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Good context on this one is, um, obviously we have that.
Second, yeah. Sorry.
So, um, our our line crews, uh, we've been, we've got a, we currently have a collection of three different brands of battery powered tools. Um, that requires us to stock three different. Versions of batteries and chargers and backup tools, et cetera. So. Um, we did an analysis, decided that if we could focus on one um tool brand, um, that would be great. Um, so went through a process in terms of uh looking at. Um, three primary brands, but the two dominant ones were Milwaukee and um DeWalt. We also happen to have. Um, a key in our collection as well. Um, we ended up looking, we ended up deciding, given the breadth and the warranty and the tools associated with Milwaukee, to focus on Milwaukee, they actually. Have a line that is focused on lineman tools, very well respected and used throughout uh the industry. Um, but the key driver for us is standardizing on on tools. And so in the, oh, oh, by the way, um, the capital budget we have is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars um for the twenty twenty four for tools. Um. Milwaukee uh has a five year general warranty, um and a two year replacement warranty. Um, we went out to um. Uh, eleven companies, three of them returned bids, um of those, we narrowed it down to two. Um. Uh, Irby, um, we ended up choosing Irby um over West Coast, and the reason being is that. Um, Irby, Smile Labor, um, a couple thousand dollars more expensive. They have a tool exchange program, so we would make it, we would basically trade in our um. Um, DeWalt's and uh Makita tools for our credit that will exceed the difference between those two. So all said and done, um, the key driver is a combination of cost and standardization.
Do you think there's any risk with the lead time being significantly longer on the? Irby versus West Coast?
No, no, um, they're pretty, uh. No, I mean, we have tools right now that we can. The the reason for the Irby is the key driver for us on those is the customer service behind it. They've got a local rep. That will come by, so instead of us having to, I could get up and shipping it back to Milwaukee, Irby will come and pick them up, but there's a problem.
So initial delivery might take more time, but then that ongoing service is better, okay?
Local services is.
Further, did we have a motion that's like?
Yes, we did.
Need further details? Okay, we're vote, all favor? Motion carries five oh.
I'll just keep on rolling on this one.
Sure.
Um, move that I F P twenty twenty four seventeen for single phase pole mounted transformers be awarded to United Utility Supply. Uh, C O E L Flowers and Associates for two hundred and thirty two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars pursuant to M G L C. One sixty four, section fifty sixty on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Those particular ones you got.
Second, oh, sorry.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Good.
All right.
I'm so excited.
I know.
Um, this went out to uh fourteen companies. We actually received uh sealed bids from six. Uh, which is good, yeah. Um, at the end of the day, um, and obviously you guys know from all the discussion we've had over the past, um transformers are something we buy on a consistent and regular basis. Um, this particular one, we'll talk about this particular one for pole mount transformers, and we'll talk about in a moment, the pad mount transformers. Um, you know, I think, you know, the the key pieces that the these tend, not tended, um. If you look at the table in the back, um, they ended up being the uh least least expensive one, but it's also, we've worked with them in the past. So it, we've got experience with these. Um. Uh, with these particular transformers. Um. The prices are slightly higher um than the purchase that we made a year ago, um, but the lead time actually is less. Yeah, well. Yeah. There's not a lot of downward, you know. There's not a lot of downward pressure on transformer prices quite yet. Um, but the good news is the lead times is uh. Short, which is a good thing, Bill.
Yeah, so I have the question on this one and the next one. This this particular company seems to be much lower than the other ones. Have we done due diligence from this company that?
We've boxed them from the past. We've dealt with them, yeah, this is a known. We've worked with them in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems that they're so much lower than everybody else. I just wondered the viability of the company, you know?
Um. Both the manufacturer and and Flowers, both are companies that we've worked with, so we don't have any concern about them. You know, I think at the end of the day, we can go back to, you know, the question, um. I think there's still, there's still value pricing going on, you know, who do you, you know, where do you, there's limited capacity in terms of the demand. And where you're gonna price, so.
Yeah.
Um. But in terms of due diligence, it's just the company's thing for us. They've been around for a while, we've dealt with them about.
That's one.
Hey, Bob has stepped up. Do we have any more questions on this? We could vote without him?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Motion carries four oh, oh, I guess with Bob temporarily out of the.
All right, um, pad mount transformers, uh, move that I F P twenty twenty four eighteen pad mount trans mounted transformers. Be awarded to United Utility Supply, C O E L Flowers and Associates for two hundred and fifty two thousand and seventy dollars. And Switchgear U S LLC for one hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. Pursuant to M G L C one sixty four, section fifty sixty on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second.
Very stressful being on this board.
A bid was sent out to sixteen vendors, we received proposals from six, again, uh, higher than what we've been doing recently, which is great. Um. As you, as you see from the proposal here, um, several, seven different types of pad mount transformers. Um, and and the types are basically the size of the transformers. Um, and so at the end of the day, um, it's like we decided again, united um via. Uh, E L Flowers for a portion of them, and then Switchgear LLC for the other portion, um, it depended upon the size of the transformers. So again, we've dealt with both of them. Um, the good news, you know, at the end of the day. Um, they're still expensive, but uh in both cases, uh, the lead times, um. Well, most of the lead times are lower, some of them, some of them have, it's a mixture in terms of the size of the transformer. Questions on the transformer related questions?
What's what's your surplus inventory? I mean, is that?
We're in good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're hust, yeah, again, and this is, um, yeah, interestingly enough, in the past, uh. Eight weeks, um, some of the deliveries that were forecasted to be end of the year came in early. Um, and so one of the things that. So so you guys know, um, our uh transformer replacement program that we are pretty. Uh, aggressively, significant volumes in uh twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, had to back way off in twenty two and twenty three. Um, you know, we're, we're actually redirecting one way to underground crews to handle the pad mount transformers, so we've got, anyway, bottom line. Uh, good inventory, so we're, we're, we, you have to manage to make sure for emergencies, um, failures, et cetera, that we have inventory. We're in good shape to such an extent that our our replacement program, we've accelerated back up again, not quite so that what we had in twenty one, twenty twenty one period. Pretty close, so good, good shape. But obviously, don't take your foot off the pedal, right? You gotta keep, gotta keep the pipeline full.
Other questions? Ready for a vote?
Yep.
All favor? The motion carries five oh. Okay, policy review. I can.
We've all read every, what?
No, I can go back to reading if we're, unless you're gonna have discussion.
I'd say we've all read every syllable of all of the edits, I take it, did our homework this time?
I did, I have no life.
I did. It doesn't mean you have no life. You did, you due diligence. Um. So anyway, actually, I have a quick before we could read the motion, but I think Erica very helpfully summarized the changes in a table, correct?
Yes.
So if you look at the table, it has all the red lines. Uh, isolated.
Mm hmm.
Very helpfully, and I reviewed that, and so anyway, if you wanna read the motion, Ray, and then we can discuss.
Okay. Move that R M L D Board of Commissioners approve policy nineteen, Board of Commissioners revision sixteen as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager.
And we want a second time?
Second.
Bob seconds, both Pam and Bob second and third.
Great. The only comment, um, just as a reminder, um, the intent, the revisions that are in play here are to. But the intention was to take. The responsibility of the Board of Commissioners that were spread across multiple, multiple, multiple. Um, different policies to compress them. So most of a lot of this was moved. Um, we did policy thirty earlier in the year with the assumption that we would make these changes. But you'll see, um, that, again, we try and do um a couple each meeting. Um, but there'll be several. If, assuming that we approve these three tonight, um, there'll be other ones that some of the stuff that will be in here will need to pull out of. Um, policy reviews later on this year.
So we've had a motion in a second. Any discussion, we're we're doing nineteen first, Ray?
Yeah.
This please. Assuming it's all summarized in the table, I reviewed it, thought the changes were all very good, thank you very much.
Mm hmm.
Anybody else?
Yes, I was fine with it.
Anybody else have comments or questions on the changes deposit? Take a minute to look at it if you want.
This is a reminder, we did, uh, when we looked at this at the previous meeting, um, we had council review this as well, with us, just make sure that we got everything proper and right.
The only comment I take it covers our. This. The changes, when we talked about uh terms and who could be.
Oh, is that it?
Vice chair.
It is, okay. And where is that? Just let's look at that real quick.
Well, it's, um, I think it's open, it's.
Sorry about, I missed the comment.
About.
When we talked about when and how long to, because of uh issues that happened in Reading earlier about the chair, I think we opened up. Um, you can be the chair in your third year, but before there was an unwritten.
Oh, I see it now, yeah.
Where, I I'm not seeing it, where?
It's in, it's on page, um. One of sixteen, it's the second to the last. Actually, as I look at it, it says the board member who is up for reelection may not be appointed as chair in the year that he.
Go to column before.
Okay, okay, sorry.
So the, yet that actually been moved, removed restriction.
Mm hmm.
So that, in essence, that that's been struck.
Correct, okay.
So if you look up on the screen, I have um a section that says Officer.
Yeah.
This is where we made some changes.
Yeah, yeah, that was very good.
You captured your request.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's been removed, okay?
Mm hmm.
Thank you. Anybody else ready to vote?
Yep.
All right, all in favor? Okay, all opposed, passes five oh. Thank you. Ray?
Board policy twelve. Move that the R M L D Board of. Board of Commissioners adopt policy twelve, Board of, Board Document Dissemination Revision four as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Uh, Greg, do you wanna this? Anything to discuss here?
Yeah, um. This. Along the same structure of nineteen, um, some of the pieces were basically taken the. just on page one of the original one responsibilities are moved to nineteen. The rest of it was just clear, you know, if you can see in that cover page. Provided support and clarity in terms of the roles of the uh commissioner versus the GM. At that table at the very bottom, right? There's a lot of red lines here, but at the end of the day, most of it streamlined. These were written at a time when they were meant to be standalone document. So twelve um is now works in concert with. And specifically. See, but E, where you see most of the red line deletions, procedure relative to executive session minutes, materials were moved to policy nineteen.
Yeah.
For the biggest changes, or that's why they're not the biggest change, but most of the red lines are.
But I did see the executive session minutes in the nineteen. Right, so that is in nineteen now. The review of the executive section.
There we ready for a vote? Yep, okay, all favor? All opposed? Pass this five oh, thank you.
We 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 read it in a second.
Oh, no.
Not thirty two, right, correct. So thirty two. With the army Board of Commissioners adopt policy thirty two, public comment revision zero as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
So the new policy. In the and I think um at the last meeting when uh this part was here, we we had some discussion on this particular one. Uh and I um so this is, this is, there's no edits from our previous ones. This is new. But it's meant to basically um allow for the Board of Commissioners to have some level of control over public comment. Control and influence.
Maybe second on the motion too.
Second. So I have a question, um. It says the board will not respond to comments made during public comment periods. I don't know if other boards have this policy and they have a similar comment, but it feels like it would be kind of a may choose versus will not.
I would agree with that change. It's not like we're gonna absolutely say that we we can't respond to.
Right.
Somebody has a question and they want to ask it, we want to answer it. You know?
You're you're free to where?
But I'm in uh section four one under procedures in the middle of that first that. It says the board will not respond to comments made during public comment periods. And I'm not saying that we have to or should not. It just feels like depending on the.
I I I agree with the comment that changing will to may.
Yeah.
Give you the option to comment or not.
Yeah, at the at the discretion of.
Yeah, if we just take out the word will not and just say the board may choose to respond.
Or may respond.
Or may, yeah.
Yeah, or may choose, may choose to respond.
I I think we, I think that's a great live edit. Um, I I just, I know we had discussions, I can't remember the, this is a while, we had a discussion with with Pollard. Assuming that that there's no other state law that we have to follow, um we'll assume this works. If there, and if that's not, I just want to check one more time because we had talked about this topic when we were doing all the.
There wouldn't be though, because if anything, the law would allow comments.
It's a, yeah. I can I speak, sorry? Please, from uh we KP walked into town, we had to meet with them because we had a residents coming and creating havoc. Um, public comment is just that, public comment. You do not have to allow. You can allow a timeline for public comment. You can say, okay, all public comments limited three minutes per person. And you can choose whether you or not you answer, but if you in theory, if you choose to answer one person, but then the next person you choose not to. I see what you're saying. That person could say, well, that wasn't fair to me because you answered that question. So you've just got to be careful with whether if you're going to answer questions for one, you need to answer questions. And it's not as cut and dry as saying, well, that was a simple question. And they got their answer. So just something to keep, but if you want to put time limits on how long someone talks. And that's in.
It is, yeah.
So that's, I so um I know we had discussions with Chris and so I what I'll do is um let's let's make the live edit of May. Um and prove it. And and approve it, the conditional on confirmation with council, something like that. You following?
Well, the only other.
I can leave it, we leave it till the May fifth meeting.
I I think everybody has a a a different background and you can comment on something because you might have some expertise in that particular um topic. So removing it takes you out of that equation, right? You might be able to provide, oh, yeah, the reason why we do this is because this, it it and it's not just writing light, but it could be a general comment about something else. Right? And it and the limit what someone can say, but to to your point is is.
Once you close public comment, you can choose under um the next topic to say, I just want to address something that was said in public comment without actually referring to answer that question. That way you're outside of public comment and you answer it. So if someone said something that you disagreed with, you don't have to. And say the back and forth, you just say, we're gonna close public comment. And when you move on, you then say, I'd like to address something that might have been said or and that's one way around it as well.
Right, so this applies to just that, that timeframe, that.
So I think we should, we should just leave it alone.
Leave it alone. And then in practice, if you want to do something different, you can do something different because it's a free country and we're allowed to.
And one other thing, a safe time, a safe answer is um we'll take it under our advice. Yeah, so if someone says something, instead of getting a back and forth, we'll take it under advisement because you're not answering questions, you're just accepting what they've said.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
So leave it. But in practice. Well, right.
Three per uh speaker standard, I I seem to recall listening to select board meeting recently, it was two minutes per speaker is does it.
That's a good point. I mean, three minutes is, that's hard. Yeah, we I think we don't quite have the.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
We're a whole different animal.
Yeah, okay.
I I feel blessed when somebody comes in and even just.
So want to talk to you guys. Well, the the so the motion, so the motion, the original motion remains with as as. Okay, great. Thank you.
Let me just read this, look at this again. This is kind of girding us for some there's something really controversial.
We don't do anything controversial here. We just sell power.
Relatably.
I didn't see it on the back of the Yeti, so.
Next year.
That's framework. I have a question about point number six, says disruptive conduct and engaging in other unprotected speech. Uh including but not limited to the following in this long list, maybe grounds for the chair to curtail speech and take other action as appropriate. What what might that other action be? Like, what would it be? From I don't know, so why don't we, why didn't I say that?
The laws of this country are built in the course of discourse. So people are allowed to sit out there and say whatever they want to. If you throw them out and there's an ambassador law case that has just now been settled with someone went all the way to the Supreme Court and and sued the person on the board and the town. Uh so they're allowed to, you you can end public comment and then once public comments end uh ended. If they still disrupt, at that point, you can ask them to leave, but it's it's not as simple. So you may want to do a little more investigation on that if you
Alright.
We, uh there's never anything we're talking about with people coming into that, but if it was to happen, there is now um pay slot that supports someone being disrupted, disrupted.
You really earned your paycheck tonight. All right, well, then I'm good with.
Pretty face.
No, no, it's all good.
I mean, I think if someone like look at. Rats, I mean.
Yeah. So, yeah, that was, that's all good. I'm I'm happy with it as as written. And anybody else have any comments or questions? Ready for vote? All favor? All opposed? Motion carries five oh. If you limit it to three minutes.
Okay, great. Uh so, couple things, um. So there's a, so NEPA holds the annual um line worker rodeo. It's a, actually, it's an E and O meeting. But they've been doing competitions since nineteen ninety nine, um and we have not participated in a long, long time. So um uh we prompted the team, that we prompted the line crew to put together a team. And uh uh they, there's a, there's a just brief description, but um they were excited to uh to compete. And uh they placed second out of twelve MLPs. The first um place team was New Hampshire Electric Cooperative. Um, uh they beat us by two points and uh that was one of the a hat fell off of one of the guys doing one of the climbs. Um it is a, it is a much more manual physical climb pole. You can see some of the stuff that they do up there. But anyways, our team came back, uh so they were super psyched to play second. It, you know, I I put that word in there friendly competition. It's.
We have a new rivalry, so.
Yeah, there's a little bit of rivalry, but but uh our, you know, so, you know. We want to have a very positive reputation, um you know, in all the different departments, right? And and the like, you know, everybody directs everybody, right? You know, this is a small community MLP world. And so uh the line work, you know, if you're all of us, right? There's there's an element of competition. You want to be the best and you know, and the guys keep telling me they are the best. And so prove it. And so they did a really good job. So that that's just, you know, that's that's a bit of encouragement to them. Um and to and to us overall, so it's it's good.
I I I see this in the water industry. The water industry does the same sort of thing.
Yeah.
Um change out pumps and do whatever. And um great way to develop skills. It reinforces safety, health and safety uh protocols because you're, like you say, your hat falls off, you lose points. And so you make sure you're get up there and come back down safe. So yeah, I'm I'm glad you're doing it. I'm glad the team is excited about it and good job on second place.
They're already, they're already need to do, we're gonna, we wanted two teams next year.
Yeah.
We have a, we have, we do have a really good line. I mean, the entire organization is great, but.
Yeah, it's teamwork building. I I love it in every way possible.
So it it's good. On recruiting, um you know, we've been talking about for eleven, ten, ten months now, the engineering role. So finalizing that, I'll have an announcement when we get together next time. Um, marketing, uh the marketing manager role, so I I need a follow up review, but uh we had to go through an internal process. Um so we're through that internal process, so when I was trying to interview candidates, critically important role. Um, control room, again, just a couple of highlights. Um, we have a new hire starting, um starting um and another open position. That's really important. Um, well, every position is important here. And then also finalize it, finalizing analyst role at the IRD. So uh anyways, that's going well. Um, morale is continues to be good, really good. Um, land, so um Ken and I, uh we, so the first item, Lynnfield Central Water Department, uh so we uh right before this meeting, we were at the uh um uh attended a vote, public vote uh earlier today. Um it was unanimous that uh we can continue moving forward. Um, this step was basically uh allowing the water department to enter into a lease agreement with RMLD. Now, this is, this is um uh water department land, so they're not in a position to sell it, but we're, they're in a position to lease. This will be roughly a two to two and a half megawatt solar array and battery system. It's the blue area. Um that white area is all of, they're building a new uh pump station um on Glen Road. And this is in the uh, obviously, this is in the eastern part of our territory. Um, we have not really had any footprint over there. We have a little station two. There's nothing there. It's eighteen, eighteen thousand and eight hundred square feet. Um, it's where we're going to put that mobile battery system um shortly. But anyways, um so Ken, thank you for all the support.
And you are squeezing a little bit more capacity out of that.
Yeah, so so as as you suggested, um, yeah, we'll we'll yeah, uh we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna maintain roughly fifty feet um off of the western property line, which backs up to potential residence. The closest one would be another seventy five feet and then um from the first panels, so the tree line, that fifty foot buffer, the tree line, another twenty five feet to minimize shading. So it's gonna be seventy five plus feet at a minimum. And then on the, those circular pieces are where it's a four hundred foot standoff from existing wellheads, so we'll maximize that because the wellheads don't care.
So Greg, how much solar and how much battery?
Five, it'll be a five megawatt battery system, either three or four hour, and then it'll be a two, somewhere between two and two and a half um solar array. So it's a small footprint, but well, two and a half is not bad. I mean, it's, it's good. So that's the size of it, Vivek. Literally, like two hours.
Detailed the the benefit to the water department?
We did, yeah, 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 yeah. So um Phil's been at some of the, so this is the
Yeah.
Fourth meeting we've done, but this is the the last one we need to do to keep the ball moving forward. So and it was part of our plan that we had talked about the the sixty million dollar piece. This was one of the projects on that one. Uh Route one twenty five, wetland delineations complete, um the survey, which is a underlying piece for the survey. Um, a physical survey, um final acreage and shape of the acreage of of dry upland will obviously affect value. All the other due diligence items are to be completed by late our, late August. Um, again, will come before, as you guys remember, um we will come back for approval to enter into a P and S um at the end of July. Um, with details in terms of what the actual based on all the due diligence, what the actual price will be. Um and we're, we'd still tend to be closed in October. Um, in that, so as we continue to dig deeper and deeper and more and more due diligence, um that whole forty one acres, the majority of which is wetlands of one form or another. It has other value for us other than trying to put something on top of it. So we still have a lot of interest in acquiring that property. I will give you more details as we finalize finalize the due diligence probably in the July meeting, but that project continues to move forward. But it's it it has been a wet, uh a wet springtime.
So so what is the Greg, you know my concern about the wetland, right? So how much of that? When you say wetland delineation complete, what does that mean?
Um Vivek, I'm gonna leave that for an executive session. Um, and just in in the context of the way the acquisition process has to go through and where we are in it. Um, I'll be happy to share that with you, not in public session until we get to the P and S period, but.
Yeah, no, no, my my concern, you you know my concern, the concern is that like a hundred year storm or something, yeah.
And and I think you've heard consistently from from myself and the RMLD team. Um, it needs to be dry land if we're gonna put anything of value on it. So we're, we are synchronized. Um I'll have more details later. Uh with my comment here, as we continue to move forward on this.
Thank you.
Which is good. Yep, well, received and and agreed to. Uh, the other element, um so had a chance over the past two weeks, I think right before, right before one of our subcommittee meetings. Came back some meeting with Ben Avento. Ben Avento is a large land owner, um primarily in North Reading, but also in Wilmington. Um, they are interested in, we would love to buy some land from them. Their land is is high and dry. And they would appreciate us as being a adjacent landowner and or tenant um uh for a whole bunch of reasons. Um we're not overly worried about the kind of business they operate. In fact, we, we there's benefits anyways. Um, there's a roughly a twenty acre parcel that we would love to purchase, but we might end up leasing. Um, and it's back to the question of all these other assets that we are talking about. We're trying to create alternatives to put um whatever sort of generation, storage, solar assets we possibly can.
Greg, what can I say on um Ben Aventos? The amount of dirt and dust that happens, how does that affect the type of equipment that you would want to put in those areas?
Yeah, so that's part of the factors.
So they're 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 a quarry, they they have a quarry or something, right?
Yes, sir. They are, they are core, and it's a dusty, it's a dusty environment. So that's part of the equation, which is part of the reason. Um, yeah, so we, so very valid point. Um, given the size of land and where we're looking at, um that'll be part of the equation. But our our goal is to get in the game and then if we're going to decide not to do it later on, it's easier to say no. But exactly, exactly the right point to be thinking about. In addition, we met with um the town of North Reading um yesterday. Um, and so there is uh at our existing substation three, uh which is behind the DPW um at one sixty four Chestnut. Um at one sixty-four Chestnut Street, on the other side of the transmission line, there's another sixteen acres that is. For all intents and purposes, land locked around wetlands, wetlands is a common thread. Um, that probably, we have, we have due diligence to do, but the town is interested in selling that property to RMLD, which is great, so we will. Just want to let you guys know that we continue to pursue opportunities for land. Um, and then there is also eight acres, which is northwest of the USPS. Post Office Distribution Hub, it's also southeast of uh. Uh, it's kind of in the middle of nowhere, which is fine for us. Um, it used to be an old water treatment plant that had some contamination associated with it, so. There's a lot of due diligence, but it's a little bit over eight acres that might be invaluable to us, and it literally is adjacent to the transmission lines. The interesting thing about the transmission lines, just for you guys all to know, there are two one fifteen KB lines. Um that go literally right through there. One of those um is what we're going to attach um our new substation six to. And also we are attached, um our substation three is currently attached to them. But also adjacent to it, there's also a three forty-five line that goes right through that. So it's a, it's an important thoroughfare. Um, we don't mind being close to transmission lines. Um, there's two other sites that the town owns, the town of um Reading owns. That could be potential sites for us to do either solar or storage or generation of one form or another. Um, so the town of of North Reading, we have an open dialogue, and we have a a commitment, so I will come back to you for approvals, et cetera. But our our commitment, or the commitment that the town manager gave is that. He will earmark us to be on the October. If we were to get this all done, we'd have to get um town beating. Um, so it would be the October one, so we're setting the stage so that we can be prepared to do that. So anyway, that's a, just a quick update, um good news on land, but you know, short term, um Linfield Solar Battery Project, uh. Another big milestone.
Are the North Reading sites close to a gas line?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, question? Friends and Family Day. You guys got a booth set up, where do you? What's going on town Friends and Family Day? I I've not, I've approached this day only through the Reading Climate Advisory Committee, um is the. Board of Commissioners or expected or show up or hang out or you get a hat or or what's expected of us?
Uh, you, so, um, yeah, you're, so so we do events. So we'll let you, we'll make sure that the events are known to you guys, and they're most often become. Um, the 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 common one, most is the annual car show that we do in August in Wilmington. But, yeah. We'll make sure you guys know about this one, too.
I I just will go, we, the Reading Climate Advisory Committee will have a booth at the Reading Friends and Family Day, so I have competition for.
For you.
Where I show up, yeah. Well, I certainly want to support, I certainly want to support my climate committee. Uh, but if you, if you. If you wanted to run back and forth, I just want to know how much running I want.
Maybe maybe we'll try and get ourselves closely, you know, closely located to you guys.
It's a small field, but not too far away. But I'll set up through Rotary, I think.
Good, thank you. Great, thank you, Greg. Uh, Pam, you want to update us in the work of the committee?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, as we agreed last time, we um. Formed the Strategic Power Supply and Load Management Committee, um first time we met, um the uh. Committee elected uh myself chair, and it consists consists of Bob, Beck, and Ken. Um, as well as myself, so we've met three times. Uh, the first time we met, we were really focused on. The scope of the committee, uh which we had a a bunch of conversations, but we essentially agreed to focus on. Really fully focusing on the fuel cell with carbon capture um program, really understanding. The opportunity that presents, the financials, the milestones, and the risks, and how we can mitigate those. Um, ahead of uh any votes to officially move forward. Uh, so our first meeting focused on determining the schedule. We meet about every week. Uh, second meeting focused on the process and the key milestones. For the investment, specifically within twenty twenty-four, as we try to move forward to get to the um. Uh, the right timeline to ensure we get the appropriate incentives. Um, it also focused, how did we, had an executive session that focused on the uh the details of the financial model. Uh, and then the third meeting focused on um a failure mode and effects analysis, um. Which really summarizes the specific risks and any mitigation activities that we can do to ensure the program is successful. Um, that would be a living document that I would expect we would share with the broader group. Um, and that we would keep it up to date with. Anybody want to add anything from the?
I just have one question. Will there be minutes of these meetings?
Yes, there are minutes. Uh, we, we voted already to approve the first set. I think we have two more sets we need to approve, but we are reviewing those and then approving them. At the beginning of the meetings.
I'd like to maybe get them distributed to everybody, if we could.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Yeah.
And we also record the sessions.
That's a good idea, through them quickly so we can get them out, maybe attach them to the. As long as they're done by Sunday.
He didn't say which Sunday C R L said. But now, thanks, Ken. Anything else scheduled, then?
I don't know, I I I think the the it's, we're getting into a lot of good detail. And I think Greg is gonna cover some of that in the executive session today, right? I think some of it is also around how to communicate the complex nature of the problem.
Good suggestions.
Does this seem like a worthwhile thing to be doing?
I I believe, yes.
This project.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I think we're getting into a lot more. Detail that I think, yeah, it'll be a little bit of a challenge compiling it quickly and making it, you know, brief, but. We've gotten into a lot of detail.
You're gonna be, the alternative was is to have like meetings every two weeks of the full board, you know? Anyway, with, probably with you guys, too, because it's so much to go over, magnitude of the investment.
Drinking from a fountain.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's.
So, okay. So that's the schedule, this being May twenty-third, I think we're good with that date. Um, the next two, are we good with those?
Ask the question while scheduled, only because um. Being on the board for this while, for as much time as I've been on it, and Phil's been on it since Fred Flintstone was generating power. But he may have the answer to this. Why wouldn't we do more joint meetings instead of. Having separate meetings, it probably gets you home one night a week.
Well, and and minutes, too.
I mean, and we cover a lot of stuff that we may not go over, that you guys go over, that's interesting information. I don't know if there's ever a time, and that's where Phil may know, um that it wouldn't make sense, but why wouldn't we do this?
Tradition, that's about it.
That's it, right?
That's it, tradition.
New tradition, so I I don't know, I'm I'm just suggesting.
You're on a roll tonight. You already fixed our public comment.
In the beginning of town, the C A B was actually staff.
I'm gonna take minutes.
The C A B was actually, was not the the general man who came to those meetings, it was the underlings into that. The people, the 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 next level of management, but that.
You noticed what we did two years ago, and I'll be, I'll be blunt, we elevated the C A B.
Yeah.
Specifically.
I've been on it for eight years, at least eight years, we elevated. Forgive me. Just a pretty face.
I mean, the thing about, to your point, I mean, it was always struck, it was weird that like when it came budget time, you you would get the budget first.
Yeah.
And like, we're not even allowed to look at the budget, so you, you're okay with it. And then we can't change it unless we go back through you, so there's, you're on to something of like, let's have a more rapid.
I mean, I think it's a great suggestion, and it's for for Greg and Eric and the staff here, too, it saves some of you guys time.
But there's times like Dave will sit in on a meeting, and he'll be just sitting there listening, and then all of a sudden, he'll come up with a couple of questions that we wouldn't have. Or I sit on your meeting, you guys have one, but the rest of the team hasn't heard that, so I just think it may add value to the whole process. I mean, obviously, we just proved that you guys voted on what you needed to vote on, we we put a motion on, so just something to think.
What, what, how about if we?
Policy nineteen, if if we're gonna do joint meetings, right, um we add something uh. In there or or somewhere that, you know, if you have a comment, right, which. How do you, how, do we need to incorporate that into policy nineteen at the cab as a comment? If we do joint meetings more often, right?
The event, the policy that, so I think the question's valid, to look, look at it, but policy nineteen is meant to be, what are the responsibilities of. Board of Commissioners, so this is more, these are things you're supposed to be doing. Not, not, but not how you run the media. You guys voted on all the policies, and we've had nothing to do with it, so you're still controlling your part of the meeting. And following all your policies, we're just. Here, serving them.
What I see, but from what Bob just said makes me think, if you, if you guys start chiming in, are you the public?
That question, are you, is it public comment?
Okay, we don't vote on it, so we, we may have some great comments, and you know, we have a quorum, so we're officially here.
Correct.
Yeah, and we had enough history of joint meetings now, right? So if those have been fine.
This works out great.
Fine going forward.
Well, what, so. Thursday, the fifth, is currently scheduled as a joint meeting. And then, and then the question, well, and so is the June twentieth meeting. No, I'm sorry, it's, it's that shifted by a half hour. Well, do we want to make that? I'm sorry, yeah, so do you want to make the June twentieth a joint? We actually should probably make the June twentieth, because that's when we're gonna be making some decisions on carbon capture fuel cells, so that. That legitimately should equally be a joint meeting. I'm gonna suggest, I offer that as a.
And then we can, we can start earlier so that.
Yeah.
If it's gonna be a long one.
Yeah, well, how long it's gonna be, but let's start early, that's right, I mean, again.
Hey, if you want to start early, we can go noon.
Already taken your.
Seen a lot of you guys lately. So I I would suggest maybe on the Thursday, June twentieth, that we started six, six.
To you guys.
Six.
If it's joint, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. The June fifth is the same, there's any reason not to make them.
Yeah, so the, unfortunately, the June fifth, we have the audit committee meeting prior to, so we have to.
Yeah.
But the twentieth, um, six. And make.
Joint. And make it at six?
Yeah.
Um, can we, since we know August is not currently scheduled, should we try and?
We don't want to do it in August, we usually don't.
That's what I'm suggesting, I'm agreeing with you, so how about, since we've got the schedule here, and everybody's physically here, why don't we, why don't we figure out July? Now. Are you guys in a position to look at your calendars quickly?
Yeah, I got it.
So, July, um Thursday, I'm. Bob and Dennis, I know you guys, in terms of Thursdays and Wednesdays, do you guys have a? I'm I'm gonna say this to everybody, but.
Wednesday is my toughest day, everything in town.
So how about the eighteenth of July? Not the. Twenty-fifth?
I'm any day on Wednesday, on Thursday is fine with me, so.
How about July twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday?
Yeah.
At six, I would be.
Yeah, works, works for me.
Great.
Six P M joint meeting. And then August, do we want it in August or not?
No, it's a network.
We typically don't, but on the other hand, I mean, assuming we we resolve all these big decisions by July, no, but. Then there's two full months without a meeting. I know we, I know the tradi- tradition, but Dennis is all about, you know, ending traditions. I wanted to, Dennis, what do you think?
What if we had a placeholder, and if we need to make a decision specifically to anything time-sensitive we do, and then if we don't need.
August fifteenth, we'll, we'll schedule, and then we can cancel it.
Let's do that.
August fifteenth?
We can always not do it, but yeah, just in case we need it.
Good, everybody?
Okay, I'm out on the fifteenth on August. Out.
Twenty-second. The conference is.
Twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth. Technically, we could be back by twenty-ninth, but twenty-second's probably a better option.
Twenty-second may not work for me.
So I think the twenty-second is the best compromise.
Yeah, it doesn't work for me, but yeah, yeah, it's okay.
So we'll, we'll schedule, and then if we decide to cancel, we can, but we got a place over six o'clock to join.
Yep.
August twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah, it just doesn't work for me, but that's okay.
Thanks, Vivek, I mean, we, thanks, the rest of us could do it the other, the other day.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
My birthday's the twenty-third, so we can celebrate ourselves.
The big five oh, doesn't come around every year, does it?
Seventy-one.
So uh I think we got a lot done tonight. So we're ready for the motion to go into executive session, C A B first, C A B first.
And move that the RMLD Citizen Advisory Board go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts. General Law C one sixty-four, section forty-seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss trade secrets or confidential. Competitively sensitive or other proprietary information provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells. For the approval of executive session minutes and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Required, sec- seconded and roll call, Ken Walter, I?
Can move it, Dan, it's Kelly, I?
Vivek, Sonya, I.
Do this one, um, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law. C one sixty-four, section forty-seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements. In certain instances, to discuss trade secrets or confidential competitively sensitive or other pri- proprietary information. Provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells for the approval of executive session minutes and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that.
Roll call required.
Uh, reporter.
How about I?
Call direct.
Okay, we're adjourned, very good, we'll go to the second.